Regular Berry City Council meeting to order this Tuesday, January 23rd. We have Counselor Booton here, Counselor Wazak, Counselor Stockwell, Counselor Lozon, and I'm Mayor Hemmerich. The meeting has been publicly posted, is being recorded, and subject to Vermont's open meeting law and the council's rules of procedure, which are available online. Welcome, everybody who's joining us tonight, both in the room and online. And if you're joining us online, please keep in mind that the chat function should only be used for technical issues or difficulties. Please remain muted unless you've been recognized to speak, and you can raise your hand to be recognized. The city offers online access as a convenience, and we'll continue the meeting if any technical difficulties occur. Also, same goes in the room. If you'd like to be recognized, raise your hand, and I'll ask that you come forward for the microphone so that the people online and our TV channel can pick you up. I'll call on speakers in order, allowing people who haven't spoken yet to speak first, and limiting time, if necessary, to get through our agenda tonight. Also, for everybody, please state your name for the record if you do address council. If you have any questions about process or procedure, please ask, and we'll get it sorted. And I want to thank everyone in advance for participating in a civil way. With that, that takes us to adjustments to the agenda. Manager Stroud, the council.
Thanks, Mayor. I mentioned in the council packet that we were going to postpone an item. It's actually 13C on the agenda just because of the numbering. Volunteer Activities Report by Adam Jacobs. We just ran out of time on the materials, but Adam will be back on the 6th, and we'll get it into the agenda that day.
Counselors, any adjustments to the agenda?
No.
Hearing and seeing none, that takes us to Visitors and Communications. This is an opportunity to speak to any item that's not on the agenda tonight. If you're here to speak to an item that is on the agenda, just raise your hand, and we take up that item of business. Yeah, you gotta do the microphone, unfortunately.
So I'm going to stay standing, because what I'll do is require some standing. My name is Lawton Rutter. I'm the district chair for Vermont EMS District 6. I'm also the Assistant Chief in Northfield, the ambulance service there. And I thank you for the time to be in front of you, and Chief Busman for the assist in getting me here. We, as a district, like to pride ourselves on recognizing individuals within our district that do great things for EMS. We have started a trend, 20-something years ago now, of awarding an award every year in recognition of Virginia Caffin. Virginia Caffin was a founding member for Cabot Ambulance and a great steward for EMS in the state of Vermont. We recognize EMS individuals in our district that embody EMS, whether it's in teaching, as a provider, as a great steward for the community. And sometimes you get one that's been around a long time, may not have been recognized, but embodies all of that. And so we're here tonight, joined by Jen Miner, who is our current secretary and head of Cabot Ambulance, to present Mr. Joe Aldsworth, with Virginia Caffin.
Let me go.
Jen, you want to go on the other side of him?
Do you want?
Well, let's get one.
Personally, that's really even for.
That also shows how young you are.
I knew Virginia very well. She taught my EMT class and everything else, so... Usually I don't mince words pretty well, but I'm pretty sweet with her.
Congratulations, Joe, and thanks for coming in.
Thank you.
Have a good night, everybody. This takes us to our consent agenda. We have approval. Oh, yeah, thanks, Carl. Are there any other items for Visitors and Communications? Don't want to cut anyone off that wants to speak to an item that's not on the agenda. All right. Hearing and seeing none, that takes us to the consent agenda, number nine. We have approval of the minutes of the regular city council meeting of Tuesday, January 16, 2024. We have our warrants from the week of January 24, 2024. We have several, a few licenses and permits.
Yep. We've got the annual entertainment license for Gusto's. We've got vending licenses for Morris Block Deli in Cornerstone. We've got vehicle for hire driver's license for Dale Q with Pay Less Taxi. We have two vehicle licenses for Pay Less Taxi, for the vehicle for hire service operators and vehicle licenses. And we have waste disposal collectors for Myers Container Service Corps for 19 pickup vehicles that make rounds throughout the city. All of them have the various required department approvals.
So those are the list of licenses, permits on the consent agenda. We also have an acceptance of the Edward Byrne Memorial JAG Grant Award. It's a police department grant, as I understand, a grant for police department equipment. We have approval of the resolution 2024-2 concerning Beamer's de-eligibility. And as I understand it, those were negotiated as part of the contract, except for the chiefs, which are leveling up with the contract.
Yep.
And then authorization for the manager to execute contracts using bond funds, unspent bond funds, for peak mechanical, for HVAC systems in the public safety building. Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda?
So moved.
Second.
There's a motion and a second. Any discussion? Just one question on the JAG. Did that require any match, the JAG?
I did not.
Okay.
And I'm passing around the resolution for signature.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, guys have it. The consent agenda is adopted.
Oh, my God, that baby is so cute and distracting. It's beautiful.
All right, with that sign, you want to pass back, right?
Yes, and it'll go to Carol.
I'll sign these, or what?
We'll get there.
All right. And then we'll pivot to you.
Yep. So a few things. Continuing reminder that we are entering election season. The city will be voting on March 5th for the Berry Unified Union School District. Ballot items, their budget and school directors. Their... Did Michael sign it?
Yes, he did.
Okay. We also vote on March 5th for the Central Vermont Career Center, budget and school directors, and for the Vermont Presidential Primary. Absentee ballot requests are being accepted. You can either call the office, or you can do it through the MVP website. There's a link on the city's website under the elections section. And what we're encouraging people to do is just sign up to get absentee ballots for the whole year, so that just works out well. The nominating petition deadline for school board members for both Central Vermont Career Center and Berry Unified Union School District, the nominating petition deadline is this coming Monday, the 29th. By 5:00 PM, the office will stay open until 5:00, as is required by statute. To accept petitions, you can blank petitions and consent of candidate forms are available on the city website, along with a list of the offices that are up for election. The city election is on May 14th, has different deadlines. The nominating petition deadline is April 8. And again, the list of offices that are up for election and blank nominating petition forms and consent of candidate forms are available on the website. And on March 14th, sorry, May 14th, the city will be voting on the city budget, city offices that are up for election, other funding requests, and other things that the council places on the ballot. So, as I said, we're entering election season, so. A reminder that the third quarter property taxes are due by February 15th, which is around the corner, so plan accordingly. And then the last thing, our annual TIF report, which was due to VEPSC by the 1st of January, has been accepted by them and will come to council at the next meeting on the 6th for your certification. And so you'll be seeing that in the not-too-distant future, so. That's all I've got.
Other questions for the Clerk, Trezor?
One question. What's the turnaround timeline? If the voters reject the budget in May, how fast do you have to... Does the council have to turn around?
15 days.
15 days, okay.
Is the shortest, is the shortest amount of time.
And if a budget isn't adopted by the beginning of the fiscal year, what happens?
Well, we've been down that road before.
Yes, we have.
And the advice from the state was, eh... They essentially said that, you know, we know you'll have a budget eventually. We suggest that you continue with what are considered, you know, what you would consider, you know, required services, public safety, water sewer, public works, skeleton administrative staff. And you turn around a budget vote as soon as you can. We had that happen once. We ended up going to the 9th or something like that, about 10 days or so into the fiscal year, so. There isn't anything with regards to municipalities like there is with schools. With schools, if a school doesn't have a budget by the 1st of July, they are then mandated a budget with, is it 15%?
Yeah, I think it's, well, I think it's 87%.
Okay, yeah, so it's 13%. Yeah, so they're mandated a budget with a percentage reduction from the previous year. But that's not the case with municipalities. We keep voting until we get one.
What's in the VEPSC, going to be in the VEPSC report?
The TIF report?
Yeah.
It's an annual report that shows, it references our original TIF contract. So there's our TIF plan. So there's information in there about the projects that were in our TIF plan. Has there been any additional work on any of them? Any expenses associated with TIF or non-TIF revenues? We currently have continuing non-TIF expenses associated with the Enterprise Alley project, because there's mitigation, ongoing mitigation that's funded through a grant from the state. So we have to report on that, report where the funding is coming from and what's being done. We have to give any updates on the private development that was identified in the plan, and any changes in parcels. As an example, we had a small parcel that was subdivided over on the other side of North Main Street during the reporting period, so we have to report on that, new parcel numbers and acreage and that kind of stuff. And then there's a bunch of narrative questions. What have you done? What new businesses have come into the city? What businesses may have closed? What changes in the number of jobs, types of jobs? They also added this year a narrative section there. Even though it covers FY '23, they wanted to know impacts from the flood, which, of course, happened after the end of FY '23. So we had some additional narrative section in there, so.
I was just wondering, thinking about the governor's, I think it's House Bill 719, proposal to freeze property taxes on housing improvements. How, like what the fiscal impact on our grant list is going to be.
Haven't even.
Couldn't catch up, and then it would freeze our TIF. And so it pretty much shut down our TIF, right?
I haven't had any opportunity to review the language in connection with running any of the numbers, so at this stage of the game, I can't.
And did the TIF group, they met recently with Whiteenburg?
Yeah, we've met a couple times.
Next steps. Mel was asking me about this, and I know she's not here tonight. Just what's happening in terms of next steps?
We have explored and identified a few things, but it's not for public consumption at this stage of the game, because it involves potential real estate, and so it's all confidential at this stage.
And no timelines for anything coming to council?
Nothing. We know that what we're working under is the timeline associated with the extensions that were granted by the legislature. We have until March 31 of 2026 to have our last incurrence of debt. And so you have to sort of work back from there as far as when that would require voter approval, when you would have to go to VEPSC, too, because VEPSC has to approve whatever our next projects are. So, you know, we're working backwards from those dates, you know, looking at what the possibilities are, so.
All moving pieces.
Yep. Yep. One thing that's nice is that the, one of the changes that happened in the TIF rule recently is that that last incurrence of debt does not have to be a bond. It can be a bond anticipation note, which actually helps move our window so that, you know, so that's good.
Yeah, that's great.
And no other questions for Carol. That takes us to Liquor and Cannabis Control Board.
Yep, we've got one item under liquor license, and I see that Chesney Barney has joined us on Zoom. Chesney has applied on behalf of Wild Child's Flower Company LLC, which is doing business in the city as Emsley the Florist. And she's applied for a new second-class license so that she can include wine with gift baskets, so. She's there, ready to introduce herself and answer any questions council might have about this new license.
Everyone, yep, as Carol said, I am one of the new owners of Emsley's. Me and my sister Francesca recently bought it in July. We submitted a fifth-class liquor license not too long ago. We're looking to add some craft beer and wine to our shop to complement bouquets and other gifts going out the door. And I really appreciate if it could get approved. Thank you.
Any questions?
So moved.
Second.
A motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed?
Abstain. I didn't, just for the record, the abstention, because you didn't do discussion, the abstention is nothing personal.
It's his practice.
It's my practice. I do it for everybody.
So Chesney, that's all there is to it.
Good luck, Chesney.
Thank you so much.
So that takes us to the city manager's report.
No, we do also have some cannabis items. Sorry. We have three license renewals. A cultivator renewal for Forbin's Finest, a manufacturer license for Green Mountain Hash, doing business as Lowkey Alchemy, and a retailer license renewal for Forbin's Reserve. And you all got redacted copies of the emails from the Cannabis Control Board, redacted as is required by statute and rule. And they are all on your plate for renewals.
Motion to approve. Second.
There's a motion and a second to approve the licenses as presented. Is there any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed?
Abstain.
Guys have it. Motion carries. And then that takes us to the manager's report.
Thanks, Mayor. Just a couple of updates for council. On North End Public Engagement, just want to kudos to Counselor Stockwell, to Pat Moulton and Tess for putting together a really great meeting at the old Labor Hall last week, a really great turnout. And actually, Adam had a big hand in that, too, with the canvassing to get people there. So I think we got a lot of, there's still a lot of new faces for me, period, in the city, but there were a lot of new faces even for me from other public meetings. So I think that was really positive. And hopefully, those people will turn out to their ward meetings, which are happening starting tomorrow. So Ward 2 tomorrow at the Brook Street School, which is 45 Brook Street. Ward 1 is the following day, Thursday, the 25th, at Spalding High School Library. That's 155 AR Street. And Ward 3 is Monday, the 29th, at the Mutua, which is 20 Beckley Street. These are all happening from 5:00 to 6:30 PM. Advocacy report from the legislature, as I've mentioned, this has taken up a lot of my time recently, but it's, I think, for a good cause and a very promising movement so far. In the Budget Adjustment Act, there was funding identified to four municipalities. We're very encouraged by this, that this will provide the assistance we need to fill the gaps in our budget. So really excited about that development, obviously waiting for it all to keep moving. But the movement is in the right direction. And there was also movement on abatements this week as well, which I know Clerk Dawes testified in the House. But on the Senate side, they passed a bill that will do just about everything we'd like for abatement. I know there's a couple of things missing, but it gets the big things out of the way, which is reimbursements. It'd allow municipalities to apply for abatement of state education taxes for properties that were lost or damaged. It provides that interest expenses would be reimbursable, and it changes household income calculations to exclude disaster relief payments. It checks a lot of boxes for both the city and for residents. This is a continuing effort. Meetings are set up tomorrow with additional legislators, just trying to build the coalition and keep the momentum going. So I think that it's been, from my perspective, wise investment by the council to hire Leonine, and we're seeing some really good movement on the things that we need. Also, an update. You may have seen today that the DRB meeting scheduled for the 1st was canceled, and that's because we received a letter from V-Trans today on a preemption for a demolition of 50 South Main Street. This is the building owned by the state of Vermont right next to the railroad at the South Main Street Crossing across from Chown Holden. The state is working on improvements to that crossing, and they reached out to the city about a demolition for that building, 50 South Main Street. Their first reach-out engagement was during the point when the mayor's proclamation was active, so they were engaging with us on that front. After the proclamation expired, they started to go through the DRB process. And just yesterday, we received a memo saying that because it's a federal project, there's a preemption, and V-Trans is not required to obtain pre-construction permits from us. So they can proceed with that without our local approval. So just wanted to give you that heads-up, that we received that. They'll be moving forward with the demolition. We'll still be coordinating with them, but they do not need DRB approval.
Is this a brick building?
No.
I don't believe it is, no.
It's like wooden stalls, wooden stalls. So it's probably pretty old.
No, it's like a three-story, quasi-Victorian-looking apartment building, gray.
Yeah, it's a home, yeah.
Michael's holding a picture right here.
Oh, thank you, yes.
Looks like a house.
Yeah.
So it will just be an empty lot?
Yeah, I believe that's what it'll be for the width and clearance they need for the work they're doing over there.
Which will decrease our grant list, right?
I mean, it was state-owned, so they probably calculated pilots on it, I suspect.
They, it will ultimately go into their pilot. If it hasn't already, it'll go into their pilot calculations. They did, I don't think the transfer happened before April 1st, so I believe that they are paying taxes for the current year.
And then we posted a couple of days ago that Janet and myself will be hosting a meeting for residents who received substantial damage letters in December. And so that meeting will be next Tuesday from 5:00 to 6:00 PM right here in the city council chambers. And we understand, recognize that these letters created confusion, anger, a lot of range of emotions, so we're hoping to be able to advise people through the process, help them through the process. And we've mailed out the same people who received the letters in the first instance will receive a follow-up letter inviting them to the meeting.
Will you be live streaming that?
We hadn't, but I suppose we can, there's no barrier to doing it, so we'll let it.
Yeah, I think that's, and recording it so that it's...
Absolutely, so it's available as a resource. That's a great suggestion. We'll make that happen. And in the effort of trying to preserve housing, we are engaging with a home on Patterson Street that was damaged. Four units there around, really close to the river. We're doing an EWP application with them. That's something the city has to apply for. We would end up with an MOU with that homeowner for the local share and the operations and maintenance moving forward. But just an update to council that we are actively engaging on that process to try to save units in the city for a house that was compromised by landslides and where the city did have an opportunity to apply for a grant that can help stabilize the bank to save those units. So we will have more probably at the next council meeting possibly, but we are engaging. And like I said, the structure here, normally if this was a city project, save this was for the Public Works Garage, as an example, we would be on the hook for the local share, because it's a public building. This is a private residence. However, the resident isn't able to apply for the program on their own, so the city applies. The city becomes sort of a pass-through. But what we do is we have a separate MOU with the property owner to cover the local share and then to continue the operations and maintenance in the future. So the city has no...
It creates a second mortgage.
Exactly, yeah. So the city has ultimately not on the hook for anything, but we get to participate in helping preserve housing. Otherwise, the repairs are so big and expensive that the homeowner has rightly said that if we can't get this grant, they'll have to also demolish. So we're doing what we can to avoid that, so hopefully, we can make progress there. And then two quick other things I know have been going on. We are beginning negotiations with, on a new contract with the union representing police department this, this week. So this will be my third contract negotiation out of the four. So looking forward to hopefully a productive negotiation. We've ratified with Ask Me USW in the past year. So this will be the next one that's up. This one expires in June. So we're getting an early start here. This Friday, this Friday, yeah, we had a full-page ad in The Times/Argus. So we've had an, an option to get a full-page ad at a, at a rate that is affordable for the city. So I'm just throwing it out to councilors and the public. We'd like to use this avenue to communicate with residents. I know a lot of people still get their information through the paper. So we're, you know, we kind of threw something together at the staff level, thinking, you know, seeing what, what'll catch on. But we are interested in feedback, both from council, from members of the public, what kind of information would be helpful. We have this great resource to, you know, get people's attention. What would they like to hear from the city? What do you think, as councilors, would be helpful information and resources to have there? So it'll happen every month, the third Friday of every month. So there's time to get feedback, but we're really interested in your thoughts about things you think residents might want to see on that resource. If residents are watching, they can also let us know what kind of input would be helpful to, to hear from the city. And then just finally, I know I'm droning on, just want to recognize Norwood Southworth, who retired last Friday. It was his last day. He's been a DPW mechanic for approximately 10 years. And Norwood's just served us with distinction. He's done great work. We're very sad to see him go. We're also very happy with his replacement, James Hood, who started and was able to overlap with him, to train him. So luckily, we won't have a gap there for a really important position at DPW. But congratulations to Norwood on a really well-earned retirement. And he, he has served, I should note, the city not just as a mechanic, but he is on the Williamstown Fire Department as a volunteer. And so there have been times when I've seen Norwood here during emergencies in his, in his gear. So he's, he's served in many ways. The people of Berry. That is it. After all that.
I have a question, but Nick has his hand up.
I'll start with Nick and then go to Councilor Stockwell.
Thank you. I'm just looking for a clarification regarding the meeting next week for folks that received those letters regarding substantial damage. Is that for folks that received the letters, or is that for people whose property was substantially damaged?
It's for people who received the letter, Nick. If you believe that you would be, that there would be helpful information to that meeting, you're, you're welcome to come. I know, I know from your situation that you were in a particularly hard-hit spot. So you're, you're more than welcome to, to join us at that, that meeting.
Great, thank you.
Mr. Stockwell.
I'm wondering about Pike Street report and, and if, also, are there bids coming in for North Seminary?
So Pike Street report is incredibly frustrating all around. The, I think the last place we had it was that, and I think it's a, it's a concerning sign in one, in some respects is that the contractor is asking for more information. They, they asked for surveys and a topographical study. We did, we decided to do that in-house because we had the skillset to do it and to not further delay that report. So they, they've got all of the information that they requested. As of last week, I believe they got the last input of information. And we are, again, awaiting the report. I, I think we've, we communicate with them on a weekly basis and imploring them to move forward. I think what concerns me is that, is that they're requesting more information because I think it validates the complexity of that slope. And, and not to be alarmist, but I, I've been worried about further down the slope. Like that's, there's two houses, but there's other people below that. So I think that we're really anxious to get it, but we also want to make sure we get the best possible information. And your other question, Councilor Stockwell, was.
Bids for North Seminary?
Oh, bids for North Seminary. Yeah, so we've had, people have reached out to Tess with questions. And so we are expecting a couple of bids. The deadline is not till the 16th, so we don't have anything yet from them. I expect most people to wait until the 16th or right around then to submit. But Tess has gotten several inquiries for, for information. So we are very excited and hopeful that we will get at least several offers.
And Ristelli, are they going to be on the agenda for, do we have enough information to respond to Ristelli's concerns?
I, I think we do. We are, Janet's drafting a zoning letter right now. We have some information from the file. We also have some information from our attorneys more recently. So we're trying to balance those two, those two points of data that we have. And so Janet's drafting a response. Given the attention it's gotten, we're going to run it by our legal counsel, obviously, before it goes out. But yeah, that's, that's, our hope is to have, is to, is to be able to get that closed out very, very soon.
Thank you.
So what does the EWP, could you remind me what that says?
Emergent watershed, something environmental watershed protection.
Or something like that, yeah. It's a USDA program.
USDA, yeah.
And that was on a consent agenda for the grant approval earlier?
No, we're working on the grant right now. Yeah, yeah. So that, that is, the grant agreement is, we're working on it with the homeowner and with USDA. At the moment, the, the real snag, the real snag is that the estimates that the homeowner has received for the work that's required is almost double, almost three times the amount that USDA approved for the grant. So we're in the position of having to draft a grant agreement that we know is insufficient to pay for the project. There is a provision by which we can go and say, hey, we got bids, can you increase the grant amount? It's kind of a two-step process. In essence, they, they went out to get estimates ahead of time so that we could figure out what we needed to apply for. But what the agency ultimately approved is not sufficient for what we believe the cost of the project will be. So that's sort of where the hang-up is right now at the moment. Hopefully, we get to the point where we can move forward, where the budget is increased ultimately so that, because what, what'll happen is we'll create a prorated budget probably, based on the approved amount. We'll have to go do all the bidding. We'll have to go back to USDA and say, hey, here's where the bids came back. Can you increase the grant amount? They'll either say yes or no. If they say yes, we can proceed. If they say no, then we're in the unfortunate situation of the homeowner running out of options, so.
And the address of the?
I think it's 52 or 54.
Forty-eight and 52, Wes Patterson. It's 52, I believe, is the.
It's the closest, the one closest to the high school.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Oh, okay, I know those, yeah, got it.
And, and it's, Mr. Ritchie's aware, he and I have been talking this week, so he's, he's been engaged. And like I said, we're, we're hoping that we can get to the point where we can save this, these structures.
Thank you. Any other questions for the manager? All right, hearing and seeing none, that takes us to our first item of new business. We have consideration of placing Good Beginnings funding request on the annual meeting ballot. I think this is one that missed the deadline, reminds me a little bit of last year with.
Washington County and people's health.
Yeah, those two, so.
And Nicole D. Domenico, the executive director, is on, on, and ready to answer any questions. You did, I believe it went out today, my cover memo, Ms. D. Domenico's letter and any other support materials that I sent along, so.
Hi, everyone. Thanks so much for having me. I'm sorry I can't be there in person. But since you all received the, the letter that I had originally wrote, and I apologize for writing the word ballet at the very bottom instead of ballot, apparently I didn't want to catch that. Just noticing that now. So just to elaborate on that a little bit, I am new to Good Beginnings as of September. It's been a steep learning curve. I had big shoes to fill with Gretchen Ilios, having been my predecessor for seven years at Good Beginnings. We are a local and very small nonprofit. There's only two staff currently right now, and we're both part-time. Myself is executive director, and we have one program director who runs all of our programming. And I had missed the initial email from your clerk, Clerk Dawes. And so I am asking for your consideration to allow us on the ballot for the same amount that we had been on it for the last several years, of $1,000, without having to obtain the 610 signatures that could end up being prohibitive for us because of our limited time and staffing. And so I'm here to answer any questions you may have. Thank you.
Move to approve, placing them on the ballot for, in the amount of $1,000.
Second.
There's a motion and a second. Is there any further discussion?
Man, I'm like dreading the, the look after this meeting. I, I think at some point, we, we need to have a conversation about whether or not we're going to do this at all. And, you know, and, and it's something that, it feels like it was just yesterday when, when we did it for for people's health and wellness and Washington County mental health, or, yeah, or whatever. It feels like it was just yesterday, but it, it is starting to weigh on me. There's no way that you can get those 600 signatures between now and May?
We can certainly try. We normally operate with three staff members, and so we're already pretty taxed. I'm, I'm not even sure whether it would be possible. But if, if we, if we had to, we would, we would go for it. It's just that, as it is, like I said, it's, it's entirely, you know, my, my fault. But also, as the result of, of me being so new and not knowing the process, me being completely new to, to the town appeal process, but also not receiving the email that ended up in my junk folder. And so we, we would have, we would, we would have to attempt it. But I'd be worried that, you know, the number of hours that it would take and based on just what that would cost us as an organization, it might not be worth our while. Not that we don't need the money, because we do. And Berry City is actually, considering that in FY '23, there were 31 families that we served. And that was the highest number in any of our towns of all the families that we served. So the most number of families. It wasn't the majority, but it was the most number. So we do a lot in Berry City, and this would be a one-time. And I, I understand and hear your frustration, that this is kind of a longstanding issue.
And it's not frustration for, for you. It's, it's a, it's a, it's an issue with us as a council. And I'm not going to be the stinker in the party. I just can't do that. But it's something that we, as a council, have to address at some point, because we do it every year, you know.
Understood. Thanks very much.
Oh, yeah. Well, and I, I would add, I don't, I don't think this would be a violation of the policy because the policy is built around the annual meeting date, and the annual meeting date has been delayed. So I don't, I don't even view this as a policy violation, so.
Note this, I'm agreeing with Michael. I think that, you know, there's enough time, let's put this in the notes, to, to gather signatures. And we're, we're asking that of other people. And I realize it may not be worth $1,000. And I love the work of Good Beginnings. I know people who, who volunteered there, and it's terrific and important work. But I think if we're going to do this process and make people do it, and we're not having a town meeting until May, we should do the same thing for Good Beginnings as we do for others.
And just for clarity, my, my comment was I was going to vote for it. Because I don't want to be the stinker. But it's something that we, as a council, have to address for ourselves.
I'll put Carol on the spot. I picked Carol. Put her on the spot. Is it, no, I mean, we extended, as the mayor said, we extended the vote to May 14th. So did we also, in fact, extend the due date to request to be placed on the ballot? Seems like we, I mean, it seems, it doesn't seem like a stretch to me.
No, I, I, I agree. I.
And there you have it.
The, the policy is written and, and all the dates flow from the date of the annual meeting. The dates, it's so many days before the annual meeting that notifications need to go out. It's so many days before the annual meeting that the response, responses are due back. The only thing that, the only, on the applications themselves that I sent out in the support materials, it did specify January 2 as the due date. But that was based on, you know, March 5th as being the annual meeting date. So I would say that, that having.
What would the new due date be?
On, well, it would be about nine weeks later than that. I, I don't have the, the calendar in front of me, but.
So.
So the first week of March.
Well, you have my vote. Carol and the railroad. That's it. So Carol's given us a ruling. We already heard from the railroad. There you go.
I mean, if, if that's.
And this is the only pending request that.
Everybody, everybody else was with the, with the original timeline, yes.
So there's a motion and a second. If there's no further discussion, all those in favors.
So let me just specify, the, the motion in the second was to place the $1,000 funding request on the ballot.
Well, but now, but now you've got me questioning, thank you, Mayor, whether that motion was in order because I, I don't believe it is. I believe that the requister has, as you said, roughly nine weeks from January 2nd to get it in. So I don't think, I don't think that Good Beginnings, by our own policy, is late at all. So I'm going to withdraw my motion. Because I think if they, if they submit the, if they submit the application, I think we have to allow them, by our own policy, to be on the agenda, to be on the ballot, rather.
So the conclusion here is that, that.
Conclusion? Go green.
I'm sorry, I'm not as quick with my words as you are, Tom. So the conclusion is, is that there's no action needed by council.
So I, I'm sorry. Yeah, I, I think probably for clarity, given the fact that it has been normal practice, we just indicate through a vote that we are putting it into the, the ballot item for, for community funding. It's not the term that I need, but Carol will fix that, right?
No.
No? Should we, or do you feel comfortable leaving it the way that it is?
I think, I, the minutes would, would note that, that the interpretation of the policy allows for the, the deadline for applications and support materials to follow the new town meeting date, annual meeting date. Therefore, Good Beginnings would have an extra period of time to, you know, submit their, their application and support materials. And that no action by the council to place the request on the ballot is necessary.
And this is the last pending item. Let's get this in and be done with this and move on so we can focus on other business.
Thank you.
So we've had the mover withdraw his motion on asking the second if he's comfortable with that, too.
Yeah, I mean, I think this seems like one of these, in my view, silly bureaucratic things. You could just take the vote right now, place them on the ballot, which will be the same outcome of them filling out this piece of paper and coming back to us in two weeks. But if it's the will of the council, that's fine.
I think from a policy and process standpoint, it's, it may not feel cleaner, but I think it is.
All right, so we'll, we'll call that done and.
Can we just provide some, just, can we just summarize that for Nicole? Because it was just very weedsy.
Nicole, I'll send you an email tomorrow with the, I mean, you, you have it because you found it in your junk folder. But the, I will, just to be on the safe side, I will send you the, the application and the, the policy. And you can put together the, and the revised due date, so.
And I will happily complete it. Thank you so much. I really appreciate it, everyone. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.
So we have a presentation by the Vermont Emergency Management, I think it's Division or Department. I can't, I can't, I never remember. Stephanie Smith.
Hi, thank you. Stephanie Smith, I'm the State Hazard Mitigation Officer at Vermont Emergency Management. It's the division within the Department of Public Safety, but state government likes to layer things in a confusing way. So thank you so much for having me this evening. I apologize that I'm not in person. But I, I'm here to give a quick overview of our hazard mitigation program and specifically the funding that we have available. So I'm going to go through two grant programs, and then I'll speak to a couple of specific project types. notably buyouts and elevations. So, but broadly, our program is intended to allow communities access to funding that helps reduce future risk, and the majority of what we're talking about ends up being flood risk. So it's very appropriate following the, the July flood. So two programs that I'll talk about, one is, they're both FEMA-funded programs. One is the Hazard Mitigation Grant Program, and we receive an allocation under this program whenever we have a federally declared disaster in the state. The amount available varies depending on the scale of the disaster, but the funding can be spent anywhere in the state on proactive risk reduction. So it doesn't have to be projects that are tied specifically to whatever the disaster was. So to give some, some context on the scale of the July flooding, following Tropical Storm Irene, that was our metric prior to this. We had about thirty-four million dollars available in this program to do mitigation work across the state. And we're waiting on final numbers, but it looks like we're going to have well over seventy-five million dollars federal funding in this program following the July flood. So the, the deadline for that funding will be late this year. We're going to request a couple of extensions from FEMA, so I don't have an exact date for you, but we, right now, we're working on finalizing a notice of funding, and that will have a June deadline for letters of intent. So the hope is we can get interest from communities by June. So you'll have plenty of time to start thinking about what projects you might want to do, and then let us know what you have, what you still need, so that we can prioritize and start supporting communities in developing projects through the end of this year. So that's the timeline for that funding. And we can do a lot of different things. Yeah, sorry, go ahead.
And is there a handout that sort of puts all these dates in place?
I can, yeah, I can, it's all up on our website. We're doing some website updates, but I can send something along. Yes, absolutely.
Thank you.
Yeah, I know, it's, it's a lot. Sorry. So just to give you the, the breadth of what we can do with this pot of funding. So the, the vast majority of what we did following Irene was property buyouts by the numbers. So property buyouts, we can do project scoping activities in order to develop future projects, floodplain restoration work, infrastructure projects like upsizing culverts, upsizing bridges, removing dams, residential property elevations, and we can do floodproofing projects for commercial or municipal buildings. And we can also do things that aren't flood-related, like utility resilience, like burying power lines. So it doesn't have to be flooding related necessarily. That just is the majority of what we've done. So that's the biggest pot of infrastructure funding that we have right now. Oh, is that a question?
Nope.
Okay, sorry. Scratch your head if you need to. Okay, so one other program that I'll speak to, and then I'll get into the weeds a little bit on the, the couple of project types. So the other program is FEMA's Swift Current Program. So it's Flood Mitigation Assistance Swift Current. It's a relatively new program. So this was launched by FEMA last fall. Nationally, there's three hundred million available, and it's specifically for states that have recent disaster declarations. So Vermont is eligible for up to forty million dollars following the July flood. And this is a little bit, it's a subset of what's eligible under that Hazard Mitigation Grant Program pot. So it's specifically for reducing risk to the National Flood Insurance Pool. So it's for properties that have flood insurance and that either are repetitive loss, severe repetitive loss, or they were substantially damaged in July. So it can be used for any of the individual property projects that we do, like buyouts, elevations, or relocation projects. So it's, we're starting to get interest under HMGP and the Hazard Mitigation Grant Program, and some of those projects will end up being more applicable here under this Swift Current pot. All of it's still eligible under the Hazard Mitigation Grant Program, but there's a quicker deadline for Swift Current. So what we're looking for, for communities now is just a sense of which projects might, which properties might be interested in an elevation, and then we can tell you which ones are eligible under this program. The deadline to FEMA is May fifteenth. But the benefit here is that some properties will be eligible for higher cost share. Sorry, give me one second. I'm getting over a cold. I apologize. So, sorry, go ahead.
So, so with a Swift Current, could like a block or could a block of homeowners say, we, we've gathered together, we have this project, could be more than one property owner at a time on a project?
Yes, so it could be elevations for a bunch of properties. It could be floodproofing for an apartment building. All of that could potentially be eligible under either program.
Thank you.
And when you say elevation, you're not talking about engineering work to determine, like, do, do design work for elevations? You're talking about the design work and funding the, the physical lifting of a structure?
Yes. So in order to, for the elevation projects in particular, we would need to have, in order to apply an elevation certificate and some conceptual designs, but we are, we're working on getting a contract in place to do that through our management costs. So for the properties that are eligible, we can have engineering support or help work with you on developing those designs so that you have what you need in order to apply by May fifteenth, because that deadline's going to come up fast. So at this point, we're, what we're looking for for towns is what, what's the list of properties that might be eligible? We can send them up to FEMA headquarters and see which ones are eligible under the Swift Current Program specifically. Sorry, and which ones might be eligible for higher cost share.
So Stephanie, last we talked about buyouts at, by council, before council, I understood that VEM was going to do a study to help the city prioritize which, which properties are, are more optimal or more appropriate to buy out, and which ones would, might not be, which, which ones might be better for elevation. Is that still in play?
Yes. So sorry, the talking is making it harder for me, coughing. I apologize. Yes, so we applied for a scoping assessment that it will go across the state, covering specifically looking at the communities that were hardest hit in July. So Berry is, is high on our list for that. FEMA awarded the project. We're just, I met with the, the group that's going to be implementing it today. So the Two Rivers Otakuiche Regional Planning Commission will be managing the engineering contract, but we'll be working with communities to do hydraulic assessments, look up and downstream, and identify opportunities where we can reduce risk more broadly. So that's the intent of that scoping assessment. So we, we haven't fully rolled that out yet, but hoping to be able to, to get that out fairly soon, so we can start having engineering support, working with you guys.
So that, but that wouldn't be ready to inform the Swift Current Program. We'd have to move forward before there's a deliverable for that, right?
Yeah, so the, I think with the elevation list, we should at least get that started now. So the full scope of here are all the projects that could be interested in elevations, so we know which ones are eligible to have that conversation. Yeah, the timing is a little tight, but if it doesn't fit under Swift Current, those are all still projects that would be eligible under that Hazard Mitigation Grant Program. So we're going to get in as many as we can by the May fifteenth deadline, but if they don't make it in in time, they could still be eligible under that larger pot of money, if that makes sense.
Yeah. While you cough, I'm so sorry you're having to go through that. That's what a pain.
Sorry, so sorry.
How does the money flow here? Does it go direct to beneficiaries, or does the city have a fiscal role in this? And is it reimbursement? Are we getting direct money for cash flow, thinking through cash flow?
Yeah, good question. So the, on the property buyouts in particular, we are setting up a new system. This is something we haven't done before, but we're setting up a state managed program that allows Vermont Emergency Management to be the subapplicant on behalf of communities that are interested. So communities could do it if they wanted, but the option that we're giving them is, VEM can function as the subapplicant. So we will manage the funding. We will hire someone to do all the appraisals. We will hire someone to do all the legal work, someone to do all the demolition, which I'm hoping makes it a lot faster also. And then the community is still going to be responsible for maintaining the site as green open space in perpetuity. So that's the plan on the buyouts. On the elevations, we, we can't take that on in the same way, because they're a lot more complicated, and we just don't have the capacity. So we are trying to see if what we can do to make the elevations a little bit easier for towns, but I, I don't have a solution to offer at this point. So right now, the town would need to be the subapplicant for the elevations.
And I see a question from Nick Ross, a flood impacted homeowner, right?
Yeah, thank you, sir. My, my question, I, that's why I attended this meeting, was I saw the council meeting and, and the presentation from VEM. I did submit an application for the voluntary buyout program. The question that I had is, does an entire, does an entire neighborhood need to apply for something like that? Or can individual, I, I don't know that I'm going to word this in a succinct manner. Yeah, I, I guess that's my, my ultimate question is, is, does an entire neighborhood need a consensus that they're applying for buyouts in order for a buyout to go through for individual homeowners? Or is that, is that not necessarily a thing?
Yes, it's, it's a good question. I think the, no, it could be just one. There could just be one property that goes forward. It doesn't have to be a whole set. I think part of what I've been talking to the city manager about, what we've been trying to figure out, and what we're hoping with the scoping assessment, it helps us get there, is a better understanding of, if we did a certain number of buyouts in one area, could we do a floodplain restoration project that lowers flood elevations and maybe prevents flooding in, in our surrounding neighborhoods, to be a little more strategic about it? So, no, it could be a one-off, but it's, it's voluntary for the property owner, and it's voluntary for the municipality as well. So I think the hope is to, to provide a better strategic route for property buyouts, if we can.
If there was, if there was a floodplain mitigation effort, like you just indicated, would that impact homeowners, the, the mandates in order, in terms of moving utilities from like their basements to elevated areas inside of their house? Because that's another sticking point for me as well, too. Like, this is financially untenable.
Yeah, is that a, sorry.
Oh, go ahead. I'm sorry. That's more.
Yeah, I think the utilities piece, I think that's a city requirement, so I can't speak to that. But I don't know if anybody else can.
Or, or to clarify, a National Flood Insurance Program requirement that we administer.
Right, so it's, it's ultimately required by the National Flood Insurance Program. We have regulations to enforce it so that we can remain in the program. So, yeah, we, we would enforce it consistent with the city's regulations in terms of elevation, Nick.
And for the reason being, so that people can maintain.
Continue flood insurance. Yeah, otherwise we, otherwise we, we may, we, we risk not being able to be in the program, and, and people wouldn't be able to get insurance.
The problem with that, from an individual, like insured standpoint, is that flood insurance doesn't cover to move these items. It just covers to replace them where they were, where they were, were in basements, not on first floors. But I, I mean, I understand from the city's, I can compartmentalize enough certainly to understand that from the city's perspective, you have a vested interest in maintaining your own flood insurance.
Yeah, and I, on the elevation piece, because I get questions about can we just elevate our utilities with FEMA funding, and elevation, if you applied for an elevation for FEMA, they won't just elevate utilities. Everything has to be above base flood elevation, depending on your requirements in, in town and, and in the city. And, and if it was substantial damage, there's different requirements that come into play. So it, it wouldn't, if you applied for a FEMA elevation, you wouldn't just elevate your utilities. You would have to elevate your entire first floor above base flood elevation.
So maybe to ask the same question in a different way, Stephanie, can you think of an example where a FEMA program that's flowing through VM would help a home pay to elevate a home, and then perhaps modify it in such a way that there might be an extension for a utility room or something like that?
Yes, yes. So the elevation could include creating a new utility room, if that's, if there's not currently space for that. That would be an eligible project cost.
Okay. So maybe something to keep your eye on, Nick, is, as things progress.
And the other thing I'll note, so, sorry.
Sorry. Is that only if the property is substantially damaged, though?
No. So you're eligible for an elevation even if your home has never flooded, if it's at flood risk. So if it's in the special flood hazard area, that's how FEMA is defining risk, you can do an elevation. And the other piece I wanted to mention, so for those properties that are, I don't know if this is your case, but for some people, this, this will matter. If the property is substantially damaged, and if you have flood insurance, there's a, there's funding available through the National Flood Insurance Program. It's called increased cost of compliance, which means if you're required to elevate because it was substantially damaged, there is some funding available. And there's a twenty-five percent match for an elevation, but that funding from the National Flood Insurance Program through increased cost of compliance can go towards your match. So for some people, that, that's at least a, another helpful addition.
Sounds like two big money opportunities for the city and its homeowners. On the Swift Current Program, is it just, are any public, public sites available for that, for that funding?
Yeah, so there's the potential to do floodproofing also with that pot and with the Hazard Mitigation Grant Program. Yes.
So like, for instance, well, I'm trying to think of a city facility that we would, that we would invest in, like City Hall.
Yeah, City Hall could be one. I'm trying to think, the Public Works Garage, there's just not much sense there, but.
Jack the whole thing up like this.
Public, public safety we're thinking about, and Stephanie, I don't know if, I can't remember if we talked to you about this, but we're thinking of building an access road in the back. We've, we, I think we fixed much of the, the problems that caused that building to flood, but we, we had an accessibility problem, which I don't, I can't remember if we talked about it or not, but we need to build a road behind the building so we can access the building if, in the case it's isolated again after, you know, the North End floods.
Okay.
But that was an immediate one that, yeah.
Yeah, we can look at that. So we've done like road relocation projects in the past, where if there's a road that's vulnerable, or it's leading to a critical facility, where we can actually move it somewhere else, or it's a little higher. So I, there, there might be a project there. We might have, we'll have to talk a little further about it.
Yep.
And then the scoping assessment that I talked about, so that's the one that we're doing, but you guys could also apply for your own scoping assessments under that Hazard Mitigation Grant Program. FEMA calls it advanced assistance, but it's scoping. And the requirement there, there is a twenty-five percent match, but it would allow you to look at something different than what we're looking at through our assessment, if that was of interest. The, the caveat is FEMA requires that you then submit an application under the same pot of funding. So we're hoping to have scoping applications in by the end of January, if possible, to give enough time for FEMA to approve that, and then give you enough time to get a project developed by the end of the year. So it's, it is possible to do your own scoping assessment, and I know we, we talked about some culverts potentially and upsizing infrastructure. Any of that could be a specific scoping study.
So there's some questions in the room here. I'm going to start with Sam Hiscok, and then, then you, then you have to come to the mic.
So for the buyouts, I know you said that they'd be doing appraisals. Does it make sense for homeowners to do, get some broker price opinions to kind of mitigate any low appraisals?
That's a good question. Thank you. That leads to something that I neglected to say, which is that the, I, I don't think it makes, if you want to get your own right now, you could, but the appraisal, there's two ways that we could do appraisals. It's either based on the current market value the day before the storm, so whatever the current market value was on July ninth, or if your home didn't flood, we can just do a current market as of today. So that appraisal happens following the FEMA award. So we put in an estimate. We usually do the assessed value plus a certain amount as an estimate if we don't have a recent appraisal. And then following the award from FEMA, the first step is to have someone do a current market appraisal or the day before the storm appraisal. So it's based on that appraisal. And we have, on the buyouts in particular, and specifically, specifically buyouts, we have match funding available. So we'll be able to give you, we would be able to give you a hundred percent of that value.
Okay. And then what is the timeframe for identifying those properties?
Yeah, so the, the applications aren't going to be due until the end of this year. That letter of intent deadline in June, we want to have a good sense by then of exactly which projects are potentially moving forward. So, and the only way to get the day before the storm value is under this funding round. So if you don't apply now, you could apply in the future under a different pot, but you wouldn't be able to do the day before the storm value, if that makes sense. So we're hoping to have a good sense by our June letter of intent deadline about which properties are going forward. It is also, it's completely voluntary, so if you get.
Oh, no, sign me up. I want him gone. Yeah.
If the project gets awarded, if the appraisal comes back low, you can always, you can change your mind. You have that ability.
Right, so that's the point of the getting broker's price opinions to counter any, a low appraisal. So does it make sense to gather that now? So does it make sense to gather that now?
No. So I, you could, there's an appeal process. So if our, if the appraisal through this process comes back lower than anticipated, you can then hire someone to do your own. Um, and then the state has to hire a third party appraiser to deconflate the two and come up with a final offer number. So I, I, if you want to have an appraisal on hand, you certainly can. But I, I would wait until you know what the appraisal comes back in under the grant.
Okay. Thank you.
Thanks, Sam. Welcome. Thanks.
I'm Andrea Young, Stephanie. I don't know where the camera is. Stephanie, we've met.
Try to ask me right here.
Wonderful. Um, so I'm Andrea Young. I lived on Courier Street at 106 Courier Street. So I know we've emailed, um, multiple times. Um, and I have a, a few questions that I just have asked previously and maybe haven't gotten answers on and would like some clarification on. The first one, and I think Stephanie, I think this is actually probably more for the council than it is necessarily for you. But what is, what is the proactive communication plan that you all are planning to implement? To communicate with people like myself, homeowners like myself, who don't really get a lot of information? And, and I know you're communicating with other people who have active, whatever things that are happening. But what's the proactive communication plan that you're going to implement? That tells people about, I mean, you must have a list of people who've been affected, who are in similar situations similar to mine. Like, are you going to do a distribution list to say, hey, by the way, did you know that we're having this city council meeting? Where the hazard mitigation program is going to be discussed? And oh, there's an RFP out for work that could potentially impact you. As a couple of examples, but what's the, the basic question? What's the proactive communication plan for people in limbo like myself?
Yeah, I would, I would kick that over to the administration. I would say, yeah, council, um, uh, uh, works through the administration and, uh, the Bury Up organization is a third party organization. We get the same updates by email that everybody else gets. And we, the only other update we've had is when Shawna came in from Bury Up. And are you doing other?
What's Bury Up? I'm sorry. What's Bury Up?
It's our local recovery committee organization.
Long-term recovery group.
Okay.
Yeah. So, so I think right now we've been, um, in this, um, limbo, right? There's not a lot of information to share at the moment as Stephanie and I, um, as Stephanie mentioned, we've been talking about the scoping, which is going to be really important for, uh, for the city to make these decisions, really for the council to make these decisions about buyouts. So what we've done, and I'm, I'm in touch with Stephanie's team frequently as we get, um, updates on the buyout intakes. And when, um, what I, what I foresee as the next step is, um, when the scoping assessment is underway, um, we will start to be in touch with people. Right, right now we're in a point where there's, there's just not, there's just not a lot to communicate. So, um, and, and I know I've, I've received emails from you, Andrea. I know, um, there's other folks like the folks on Pike Street who are in a really precarious, I know you're in a similar situation. So we're in touch with people sort of on an individual basis, the, the people who've reached out. It's really like, we, we just don't have a lot to share at the moment until the scoping is in, is in place. And until we start to move through a, a really a more decision-making process. Right now we don't have the information to go through decision-making. And once we do, um, I, you know, the, the communication will increase, I think. It's a, I think it's a small enough group. It's, it's 40, it's 40 is a lot. Obviously we wouldn't hate the fact that we're dealing with 40 people in this situation. It's a small enough group that we can have, you know, individual conversations, but we will, we will get to email lists. We will get to my assistant making calls. We will get to letters going out. The issue is just, as I said, there's just hasn't been much to communicate at the moment until we get the scoping assessment underway.
So in the absence of information, um, people tend to make up their own, right? So, you know, a basic tenet of public information is to share on a regular, on a regular schedule, information with people who have experienced a disaster. So I would encourage you to be thinking about sharing information, even if it is, we don't have anything to share right now. We don't have any updates because otherwise it's just what's, I'm in this void and you don't have any idea what's going on. So I appreciate that. Thank you.
Are you, are you getting emails from the city or?
I'm getting emails from, I'm getting no communication from anyone.
Like about the ward meetings or?
Unless I reach out specifically, multiple times, I'm not getting any information.
And, and it sounds like we're going to be in a situation where we're not going to have a scoping assessment before we need to identify these elevation. Wait, if I'm reading my thing right, the scoping assessment high on the list, but it's probably not going to be ready for it. The Swift water current program, which may not fit your situation.
I'm a landslide. I'm a, I'm a landslide.
Well, we are going to have to start making decisions.
Yeah. I think, and we have some information from the work that Janet's been doing about potential elevation. So I think what Stephanie, uh, referred to about having a, a potential list of candidates, uh, is, is information that we have from the work Janet's been doing with substantial damage. Andrea's case is, is different. Yeah. It's not an elevation. It's, it's a landslide.
And so you wouldn't be on the substantial damage list.
No, no. And I, and Andrea's not in the, Andrea's a really unusual case because she's not in the floodplain.
I'm not in a floodplain.
She's on Courier Street.
You know, the cliff, uh, cliff.
Yeah. Yeah.
So it's a really.
It's unlivable. I'm not allowed to live in the house. Um, and I haven't been since January, since July 14th. So I was homeless for a couple of months and lived in a camper and have secured myself an apartment. And just really trying to figure out like what's, what's going on. Um, so yes, ma'am.
So you'd, so Bury Up, you don't know what Bury Up is?
I've never heard of Bury Up before.
Okay. And you haven't, so therefore you haven't applied for any money from Bury Up just to help get through this next.
I don't think Bury Up has money.
Well, the, the relief fund that comes through Bury Up, the community relief fund that people can apply.
It doesn't come through.
That's a separate nonprofit. Yeah. Foundation. Yeah.
Okay. Um, my next question, um, have you identified what the factors are? And Stephanie, this might, um, go to you, like, are there specific factors that will determine which properties are going to be put into this buyout program and, and like, how is that decision being made?
Yeah. So I, I appreciate it and I, I appreciate the situation that you're in Andrea. I, the, the things that we need in order to move on any of these buyouts are a property owner that's willing and a community that's willing. And if we don't have those two things, we can't move. So I think the place that we're in right now is the city deliberating and trying to figure out how to move forward.
Okay. So then I would pose that then next to the, to the city. What are your determining factors?
And particularly, I think in your case, uh, it sounds like we need to be thinking about what, how are the, slope failure properties, uh, categorized differently and, and processed? Cause it sounds like they go through a different thing. And Stephanie, I was curious, is there any, will any of this money apply to the slope failure properties or is it only flood hazard properties?
Yeah. Good question. So I apologize. I didn't hit on that. Um, yes. So a lot of what we're talking about is flood. But yes, landslide buyouts are also eligible. So it's a different category of eligibility under the buyout program. Prior to July, it had always been properties that were just about to fail at risk of failure, um, but hadn't failed yet. So we're in a new situation here where we're looking at doing day before the storm values for landslides, which we've never done before. But yes, so what it takes for, in order for us to do a landslide buyout is a letter from the state geologist certifying that it's at imminent risk of failure. So we do have that for, I believe we have that for Andrea's property and the two Pike Street as well.
We do. Yeah. So, and, and I, um, I mean, the council hasn't discussed this yet because it's, it's still premature, but, um, the things that we've been thinking of at a staff level have been, what properties, there's 40. So I'm, I'm just going to, you know, and this is my opinion, the council will make the decision. In my opinion, we can't buy out 40 homes and survive as a city, uh, because of the loss of grand list value. And so there'll be, there'll be, I think there'll, I think there'll be hard decisions about which ones to buy out or not, which is why this assessment will be very important. In terms of the things we've been thinking about at a staff level, very preliminarily, are there buyouts that, uh, increase, increase floodplain restoration? So again, Nick, I'm not making any promises, but you are on Berlin and Scampini in a place that might make sense for floodplain restoration, right next to, right close to, uh, Representative Anthony's home, right? Who's also applied for buyout. So I'm not saying the council should or shouldn't buy them out, but I'm saying that's an example of a place where there's a bend in the river, where homes were just absolutely devastated. Where there appear to be, um, some homes in consensus for buyout, which could make really clear sense for a floodplain. So I think that's, that's one, uh, thing to consider. I think, um, this, I think my recommendation would be that we'd be really prudent on homes that can't be elevated. So if a home can be elevated, but they've applied for buyout, that the council make that consideration as well, because we just can't afford to lose grand list value in housing, period. And then, um, in terms of the landslides, um, and, um, and I'm curious about Stephanie's thoughts about this. We, we haven't talked about these particulars, but the things we've been thinking about at staff level is, are there, are there, uh, lots where landslides occurred that could be stabilized? And ironically could be stable now that the landslide has given, right? So for example, we're all aware of the Oswald Street slide where the house, um, the modular home was destroyed. That home is destroyed. Is, is that actually now that the landslide gave, could it be made stable where a new home could be built, right? So do we do a landslide, do we do a buyout there or not? My understanding from what I've understood is if we do a buyout, that becomes permanently green. If we don't do a buyout, do something else, even though there was a home there that was lost, it could become a buildable lot. And I think the council should consider things like that. I think your lot is, is similar, like there's, is, is it, is there a way where, um, maybe the current structure is unsafe, but the lot itself could somehow be safe? Like those are the things we don't know that I think, um, the council should take into consideration. But these are all preliminary thoughts we've had at the staff level. I think once we have more information, these will be policy decisions that, um, the seven folks up here will have to make.
Thank you.
Yeah. And I'll just, sorry if I can jump in on that really quickly. I would just say that the, in terms of, to answer your question, whether the slope, slope is now stable or not, is a good question for Ben DeYoung, who's the state geologist that wrote those imminent risk memos. I can't speak to that, but I, he would love to, I'm sure, um, and have a really good perspective on that. In terms of stabilizing slopes, um, we've only, we've, we have one slope composition project that we did following Irene. That's still not done yet. It's our last open project. They're incredibly complicated and they're incredibly expensive. So it's depending on what is at risk. It, it would need to be, there would need to be a lot of things at risk in order for us to justify the cost of that to FEMA, to do a stabilization project.
Thanks Stephanie. So I see a couple of hands raised for people who haven't spoken yet. Linda, and unless you have any, any other, anything else that you wanted to?
Got several more questions.
Okay. Yeah. Well, let's finish with your questions. Yeah.
What can homeowners do at this point to assist in the process to maybe hopefully get things ahead of schedule? You know, the, the FEMA assistance, rental assistance lasts 18 months from date of disaster. I can't imagine that there are too many people that can afford to continue to pay their mortgage, their property taxes, homeowners insurance, and also pay to live somewhere else. So there, what I, the only thing that I've heard is that this is probably going to take two years to, to happen, um, which obviously puts myself and a lot of other people in a situation where bankruptcy is a very realistic option. And so what can I do? What can other homeowners do to try and help assist in this process?
So Andrea, the first thing I would ask is have you, have you applied to abatement with Clerk Dawes?
I have.
Okay. Good. Oh, good. 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 Okay. So I'm just wondering, cause I've met people who haven't yet. And so I just, I'm glad you've done that because that's an important, um, first step. And, and I, I, I think that, um, from our, again, from our perspective, once we have this, this scoping information, I, I don't want to, I don't mean to sound like a broken record, but I think once we have this scoping information, I think both the city administration and the council should have the information necessary to, to move forward. You know, I, believe me, we understand, you know, I, I, I hear from you and people in similar situations. It's, um, we're going to move as quickly as we can, um, with the information once we have it. I think the example of that is, um, we had a really unique opportunity to, to, to demolish the home on, um, Portland. Um, and that happened, you know, just to give you an example, when we had an opportunity to do it, that moved within days. Like it was 48 hours or less. And so we're doing, uh, whatever we can to move as quickly as possible because we know people are in limbo. That was a different situation because that home slid over the street. And so, uh, it was different. It was just treated different by FEMA and allowed for a quick action. But that I think just, I hope highlights the fact that if we have an opportunity to jump on something to get people out of limbo, we will do it as quickly as possible.
Um, I understand that the scoping isn't going to be done until the end of this year. Is that an accurate understanding?
Well, and I think there's two different things. So you, for the landslides, you talked about a landslide assessment that you're working on at the city, right? The scoping that I'm talking about is the river assessment. So I want to make sure we're not conflating two things.
So is there a scoping assessment for the landslides then?
Yeah, that's, that's the work that, uh, Sam Bornhead's doing. Yeah.
And what's the timeline for that?
It, they've, they've been slow.
Okay.
Been slow.
And they haven't given you like a, we expect to be done?
No.
Okay. And this is, this is a contract that you have with a company that's doing it?
Yeah.
And it wasn't outlined when the deliverables would come in?
It, it was, it's been, they've been blown past because they're dealing with a really complex set of slides.
Okay. Okay. Um, in an email that you had sent me, you mentioned that there was going to be an RFP to evaluate buyouts. And I had asked what that was and you might've missed that question, but what was that RFP?
That was the, yeah, the, the firm. Yeah.
So then what happens if, if, if you all decide not to buy these damaged properties? And there are going to be some properties that you decide not to, not to purchase. People will be left with uninhabitable properties that they also cannot sell. Because if you can't live in the house, then why would you buy it? Right? So what, what happens at that point? What, I mean, is, does it just become a vacant lot with a building that is abandoned? And no one lives in it and no one pays taxes on it anyway, because it's uninhabitable? Or what, I mean, what happens at that point? I'm asking for very selfish reasons, but I can't imagine other people aren't in a similar, having similar questions.
I would think the scenario you describe is, is accurate and that would be, then become a, a public nuisance as all vacant and blighted properties are considered. And, uh, and I think one thing, question I'd have for Stephanie, kind of just thinking about these timelines and potential gaps, based on the restrictions of federal money, is the governor's budget including any flexible state money to help make these homeowners whole? I know he was really initially very focused on, you know, demolishing the north end and, and building large apartment buildings. And, uh, and now that's getting more nuanced and, uh, more strategic and plan-based. But is there going to be flexible state money proposed in the governor's budget for these types of households or situations?
Yeah. So I was, I was in meetings all afternoon and I looked at it very quickly after the one o'clock. But the only piece that I saw in there was 12 and a half million for match, so for FEMA match, which could potentially go towards elevations or, um, other types of projects outside of just the buyouts. But that's all that I saw.
My very last question, and I appreciate you entertaining all of my questions.
But there is bill 723, which does include money for homeowners who would not be eligible for FEMA or it doesn't work out for FEMA. You know, it's a bill, it's the, who knows what will happen, but it does include money for people in your situation.
My last question is right now, um, it's an active movement, um, the house itself. So far is fine, um, uninhabitable of course, but what happens if in the spring, when we get the thaws and that bank completely goes and then my house is gone? Does that change the situation? Does that make me ineligible because it's not a, an effect of the July floods? It's because it happened in a second incident or like what, what's, what happens then?
So like you're in this scenario, a new rain event occurs, there's slope failure.
Or just the continuing, because my, my property has been classified as imminent risk. So within the next five years, that bank is going to fall. And actually in the, in the nineties, that bank was, was gone from under my house. And I did not obviously live there at the time. Um, so it's happened before. So it's, it's definitely going to happen again to that house. And so if it does, if it does before decisions are made, does that impact my ability to participate in any kind of buyout program?
Stephanie?
Yeah. From my end, no. So it's a. So it's a day before, we're already doing a day before the storm, we'd be able to put in that same application. So I, we haven't been in that scenario before, but I, I don't think that would be an issue. I sincerely hope that that does not occur, but I, I think we'd be able to still make it work.
Okay. Again, thank you for entertaining all of my questions, I appreciate it.
Thank you, and I think we really hear you on the, the need to step up the communication.
If I might just, we also share your frustration with the council, was it, two weeks ago, we had the conversation about the contractors, and we are just as frustrated as anybody else that these, that these answers aren't coming in.
Without any respect, I don't imagine you're as frustrated as I am.
Fair enough.
Having lost my home.
Yeah, no, fair enough. I meant that we're paying attention to it.
Linda?
Hi, I have a question that was brought up by the last speaker, and that is the buyout program. And I applied early on for buyout possibilities, and I have not received one thing. I don't know if I'm on the list of 40 or friends of Anthony or any of that, but the communication is dismal. And I am temporarily located out of town, so I don't even hear anything local. So I want to be put on some kind of list for people who have been flooded, who are at risk of losing their homes, and are interested in the buyout. Can you tell me, Nicholas, if I'm on the buyout list?
Yeah, Linda, I, I think we've emailed about this three or four times, but yeah, we are, you're on the buyout list.
We have, don't talk down to me.
I, I think we have, I, I, I just want to make sure we, we have communicated about it. So you are on the list for it, and, and that's the, that's the intakes that went into VEM, which Stephanie's team has, communicates with us and keeps us updated on. So once, yeah, so I'm just confirming that, yes, you are.
And there's been no response from you ever about it, so why not?
Linda, I, I, you, you may not be getting my emails, but I know that when, when I get questions from you, I do respond.
Nothing about the buyout, you can go back through and look.
The buyouts, there isn't information to share at the moment. So what we've gotten so far is intakes, and once we have the scoping assessment that Stephanie talked about at the beginning, we're going to be able to move forward on, on that process. So there, there just, there isn't information to share. When you've emailed about it, I've, I've tried to be responsive, but there just isn't new policy or procedures or steps to, to take.
Thank you.
Yep, thank you.
Pam Wilson?
Hi, this is Pam Wilson, I'm one of the board members of Berryup. I want to thank Andrea for her presence and for bringing her story to council tonight because it highlights one of the, the challenges of communication during disasters. And I, the first that she came onto my radar as a board member at Berryup, who has been trying to find and communicate with residents since the early days of the flood, the first that I heard of her story was on the Vermont, when it was on Vermont Digger, I believe, with the landslide story. So one of the, the requests that I would make to councils, if you're doing constituent services, if residents are reaching out to you, asking for help or assistance or have questions, please help them plug into the resources and the, and right now, I will admit, the very small amount of financial assistance and grant navigation that we're able to mobilize, but it's, it's not big, but it's also not nothing. We hold drop-in hours once a week from 6:00 to 8:00 PM at the, the, excuse me, the office next to, next to the planning office, the Flood Hub Recovery Space at Berry City, Berry City Hall. We ramp up a website, we have a Facebook page, we send out weekly newsletters, but if folks don't know that we're there, then we're not able to effectively connect with them. And right now, we've been working in an all volunteer capacity. Hopefully, that will be changing within the next week or two as we, as we go through a hiring process. And yeah, we're here, we're trying to help in the way, in the small ways that we can. We've been engaged with about 50 different buildings or household, or flood impacted residents. And we'd love to be able to do more, but drop-in hours have been very, very lightly utilized. And when residents, after a process of displacement are scattered, it becomes harder and harder to find people, to follow up with people and to connect with people. So we are here and able to help in the ways that we can, and please help us make those connections within the community. Thanks.
Thanks Pam, and definitely I've found your, the Berryup e-newsletter to have, be one of the most helpful sources of information about flood recovery. It sounds like though, there may be continued opportunities for the city to tap into your base and for us to be promoting you as a communicator and, and working with VM, VEM in that way.
I think that there's really real privacy issues that matter to residents. I think that, you know, we have generally been working on a opt-in, we've done door knocking, we've done community canvassing, but in a flood that had this kind of really widely dispersed geographic impact, you know, we, we often talk about certain hardest-hit areas, but then we know that there are these folks all throughout the wards, not just in the north end, who had anywhere from minor to really catastrophic things happening. And very often, and this is really common after a disaster, that folks, if you, if you've got a close network of neighbors who are also in the know, you can share information easily, but if you're someone who is displaced from your home, being able to connect in and keep up with information, being able to know what's happening when things happen really quickly or change really quickly is really challenging. So I want to, I, I want to, I am, I want to say two kind of contradictory things. One is, you know, resident privacy is important, and who has access to your private information is not something to be taken lightly. And when you as, as counselors know of folks who do need to be reached out to, we will absolutely call them. And I've gone through to make sure that everybody's gotten, if they've reached out through the website, I've, I've made sure everybody's gotten at least one, maybe two calls back. But if people don't know to call, or if they don't use Facebook, or if they don't know to sign up for the newsletter, then, then we're missing a really important link in that, in that chain of communication.
Well, Stephanie, did you have anything else that you wanted to share about these important funding sources? And it sounds like we need to move quickly by May 15th for the, the Swift Water, and then by July.
Can I say one thing? That's ridiculous. The privacy, okay, I have two properties that are substantially damaged, and I'm not getting those emails. You all know me by name, you all know my properties, you all know what has happened to my properties. I wasn't put on a list, she wasn't put on a list, you're all aware of us. So this privacy thing only is such a crock. We need this information, and we're not getting it. We're not.
Blind copy.
Right, we're not, do you, my email address is out there. We're all on the grand list, which is public. You have our information. Would you be upset if your email address was shared with resources? No, I imagine not. That's ridiculous to not put us all on an email list.
That's the takeaway from this, right? Obviously.
And I, I appreciate when everybody's.
All right, okay, well, thank you. Would you like to be recognized, sir?
Yeah.
If you could introduce your name for the record.
Jerry Hatch. The, it's pretty apparent that you are all uncommunicative and unresponsive. That would be the consensus of everybody on this side and out there. And not only do you seem unwilling to accept that, you're unwilling to change it. There's nothing that's been said here that's changing anything. Sending emails, oh, we've got to be, be careful of privacy, blind copy. If you, it isn't that difficult. It shouldn't be that difficult. If it's that difficult for you, you should find another way to try and serve the community because you're not doing it now.
Thank you for that. Pam Wilson?
Um, oh, I'm sorry, I think I forgot to put my hand back down. And just to clarify, we're, we're a separate nonprofit from the city, so for the, Nicholas and the city employees have, in working with folks who have, who are involved with FEMA, there are firewalls where they're not necessarily allowed to share information with us. So I just want to clarify that we're a separate organization and, and the city employees are, are working to do their best to follow their particular procedures and not share information with outside organizations in a way that violates their own privacy procedures. And that's why at Berryup, we, we worked with an opt-in model, so that, with the, with the hope that we would be able to get information out there to people who needed it. So we're doing our best, and, and, and if we've missed people, we are, you, that doesn't feel good, and please get in touch so that we can do what we can to be helpful.
Thank you Pam, and I appreciate all the comments that have been said. I, I understand, or I hear this frustration, and, and, and I, and what I'm hearing is that we have opportunities to improve both the communication from the city and the organization of which the city has an appointed member on their board, to make sure that those messages are clear. And also, we're working in coordination with VEM. I know, looking at the Vermont Digger map of the cliffhangers, the article about that, they were all on the map, and anonymized to some extent, but they were there, right? So I'm, I'm, I'm wondering if we can have a similar opt-in where, where people can opt into more communication and updates about where things are. This is where we are this week. Would that be possible?
Yeah, I mean, that's fine with me, that, as I've said, there's, there hasn't been information to share. And I think that the people who've gone through, you know, I think people would be well-served to talk to Mr. Mason about the communication they got, right as we were working on his home, because it was constant and personal. We just haven't had that same level of information to share at the moment. But we can do whatever would make people feel better about the information they're, they're receiving. I would also say that several of the people who've spoken tonight about lack of communication have emailed me personally multiple times, and yes, with delays, received responses. So where we can, we are giving that information. Again, it's, and I don't believe I said anything different tonight than I said to them in those emails, we just don't have new information to share. I've been very happy to hear that the scoping is getting close so that we can get to that point, because I understand the frustration, but we were, we're happy to try anything that'll make people feel better about it.
Counselor Booten?
Is there any way?
Hey, no, that's unacceptable.
Okay.
Counselor Booten?
Thank you. Is there any possible way that you have a, do you have a list of the folks that are with their contact information? Could you compile it?
We could compile it, we have the, the list of, we have the, the intakes of buyouts from Stephanie, so I'm sure if, if that didn't have the, the contact, I'm sure we can collect it.
If you, would you be amenable to collecting that information and then creating a distribution list? And, you know, even though there's no information, relevant information to share, you could share the, the newsletter if you wanted to, or anything else that, at, at least, at a very minimum, there's that, that feel that, you know, someone is communicating.
I'm, I'm, I'm more than happy to do that. I would just say that, in my experience, so it's just my experience, when there isn't information to share, and you get emails from people without information to share, it's easy to tune that out. So that's what I do with VT Alerts, for example. And I, and I send VTAlert tonight, and they're easy to tune out because I get them from Lemoil County, right? So, but I understand that may make people feel better about it, we'll, we're happy to do it. Again, it, it will be a lot of, you know, there's no scoping this week, you know, scoping is starting this week, it'll be minimal, but we're, if it, if it helps people feel connected to it, that's, we're happy to do that.
Right. And, and part of that, you know, we, we've had the conversation about getting a text message service, and maybe even though it's a little pricey, might be something that, it's just, just do it, and not, I'm not telling you just do it, but, you know, it might be a, a situation where this is a.
And, and that's, I mean, that's frequently a, a challenge, right? That some people have emails, other people don't communicate via emails. How do we reach the others? Is that phone calls from my assistant? Those are all things we can do. Again, it's, I, I think the, the example is, you know, if you talk to Mr. Mason, people will understand that he and I, and Chief Cushman and many others run the phone with the Masons multiple times a day. So we, we understand the value of communication when there's communication. So I, I think we'll, we'll reach some people, we, we just may not be able to reach all of them, but if, if that's something that would feel, make people feel connected to the process, we're happy to do that.
And I'm, I'm not suggesting at all that you're not being communicative, but I, I do think that that might be beneficial. I will say with VT Alerts, you have to click on the link to go to the thing, which, yeah, they're not, I do, they do go into my, okay. But, I mean, if you had a cell, or a text message thing where you can put in like a half a paragraph or something.
Anyway, while we have VEM in the room, I find VT Alerts very helpful. I only registered for Berry City Popular, I only get those alerts, and I value them tremendously. Thank you.
It's on my program, I won't be mad, it's okay. Say whatever you want.
I think it's really hard for people to understand how complicated the process is. Like, you know, Ward 3 is my ward, and I really want to tell people on Pike Street, we know something about what's going to happen with the railroad bed. I want to tell the people in my neighborhood, we know something about what's going to happen. And, you know, I watch those guys out there with the machines, and I think, well, that's really interesting, but we really need the report. However, we cannot make them work any faster than they can work. And it's the same with the buyout process. When I, when I hear from people who've done FEMA, it's incredibly complex, you know, and, and a federal process, all the money that will come for a buyout is through a federal process. It's incredibly convoluted, and the stuff the city needs to do and the stuff the individual needs to do, and the pockets, you're like, right, there's a swift current, and there's another program, and there's another program, and they all have different rules. I don't want to lie to you and say this isn't going to be difficult and, and, and take a long time. I'm hoping that there's 10 bills at the State House having to do with the flood, and some of those free up money for folks like people here. I have to say for a quick response, I think that's the best, but I also think it's good if we have the time, if the city manager could say, here's where we are and here's the convolution. Here's where we are, you know, like one of those dots. Here's the dot, we're still at assessment of the landslides, we're still at doing the scoping. And then people would know that this is where we're, this is the step we're on.
I also think there's an opportunity, as we continue through the budget conversations, instead of just rolling the same budgets forward to the same department, we need to be more strategic. And communications has been an ongoing weakness that we've recognized and talked about as a council, but we never shift any job responsibilities or funding to actually make communication happen in a, in a very concerted way to get ahead of problems before they happen, to make sure that people are aware of, well, it could be anything, but, so I do think we need to talk about that at the budget level, and then not just roll things forward, but be strategic about how. How we spend communication resources to up, up, up the city's game in that respect. So, Nick.
Yeah, thank you. I don't, I don't want to hammer you guys anymore than you probably already feel like tonight, but just the, the overall, I mean, the communication, it, it really hasn't been great and. I mean, thank you, Sam, for, for everything that you've done so far as well too, but I just, even knowing that, like. You don't have information right now is still helpful, right? Because I, I think that I've spoken with you, Sam, and, and with, with Nicholas as well. I mean, we're, we're, at this point, my wife Kate and I are, are just. We're only here still until we find out what's happening with the buyout process. We're, we're leaving the city like that. We don't feel like that the area in terms of potential flooding again is, is safe. If we need to do a cash for home sort of like buyout thing with, with some private equity firm. And just hope that we get the mortgage covered at this point, like that's, that's what we're going with. So we're just. We're looking for any information regarding the timeline, even if it's, there's no information and I, and I. Communication wise, I was really disappointed. We got the letter indicating that we didn't apply for a flood hazard permit that we didn't know. A week before Christmas, when in the letter it cited that in city inspectors came around July 26th. Why didn't something like that come out in August or September or October or November? What, why a week before Christmas where people notify, you know what I mean? Like. This, we're talking about a breadth of time that's transpired when, when folks clearly knew that something needed to get done that didn't get done. And now. We're being sort of like financially impacted pretty, pretty severely at this point. It, it just, it could be a lot, it could be a lot better. And yeah, I would. Any emails, text messages, whatever. I mean, people have my tax, like people have my contact information. I paid the tax bill. I pay the water bill. You know, so I would just, yeah, anything that you guys can do to be transparent around the process, I think would be. Helpful to, to everybody that's been involved.
I suspect many of the councils will be at that next Tuesday meeting from five to six PM about the substantial damage letters that went out and. And perhaps staff can provide more insight and the, the timing of, of their letters compared to other communities. And then, you know, I encourage anybody to continue to tune into council's budget discussions because that's where, really where the rubber hits the road. On, you know, budgets are a reflection of priorities and. And it sounds to me that we need to be investing more in, in communications and we tried to fund a housing planner and that position was never filled and. And so some resources have shifted around through a grant from. The Agency of Human Services to support more housing opportunities. But I, I think we recognize that there are going to be a lot of tough buyout decisions for this body. They are going to be very painful for the city's fiscal capacity. Long-term moving forward in the grand list and the revenues upon which we depend to provide services. And that the only way we counterbalance that is if we have a, a very. Well orchestrated housing and economic development program. And I would say we're not there right now, but I hope, I hope we could, I hope we can get there. And the first step is this infill housing study from the Central Vermont Regional Planning Commission that was proposed by Council Stockwell. Two, three years ago. And finally, and finally got traction this year about looking at where can we develop houses safely in the city? And, and thankfully it's finally moving, but so pay attention to who you elect. It matters. With that. I think we should probably pivot unless Stephanie Smith, you have anything else, but I hear housing mitigation grant program, 75 million. You're going to enter the notice of funding this spring LOIs are due. By June, we need to have our apps by the end of the year. And then the Swift Current Program, the SCP, you need to have applications by May 15th and there's going to be 40 million for Vermont, right?
Yes. And I think on the Swift Current, the piece that we need as soon as possible is just a list of here are all the potential elevations. In the city, or even if it's just here, all the properties that were substantial damaged and we can figure out what's eligible with FEMA, then we can send that, that list back to you. So we know what we should move on quickly and, and make sure that we're giving you guys the resources you need to develop those projects.
Any other recommendations for the city? All right. Thanks, Stephanie. So that takes us to our last.
The award meetings that I saw in Front porch forum, I was not in a flood. Do I attend those meetings?
Yes.
Yes.
And I don't, I don't live near here, so I just want to make sure that our drive is.
You, you're Ward Two?
Ward One.
Ward One.
Ward One.
Career is Ward One.
Thursday.
Spalding High School. All right. So the last item is Council Stockwell, your mediation proposal.
How appropriate. I, I started actually working on this proposal before flood because I was worried about the ability of council to work together well. We should disagree and disagreement is really useful. I'm not saying that, but. We're at a really critical time in the city's life. I can't stress the danger of the city. The city is in. So this is an opportunity to talk about housing in particular with mediation in an executive session. It's actually part of a three-part. It'd be a three-part mediation, but only one part, only two parts would involve city council. Shall I explain? So. Jedi, the Equity Diversity and Inclusion Committee got a grant to do mediation for their particular group. But they got enough money to do more than that. And Jo Ellen can explain that more. And I knew that money was a concern, so this money could be used for us to have a mediation session. With someone to discuss housing in particular and for us to agree on what's going to happen and. Or at least in what directions we would like to go in. And to hopefully come out working together better and having free times to disagree with each other. So then there would be another session for the Diversity and Equity Committee only. And there'd be a third session that would include the Diversity and Equity Committee with council. That's it in brief.
That overview. Any questions for Council Stockwell, Council Booten?
Yeah, I, I got quite a few. So the executive session portion of it, I don't understand what, what qualifies for the executive session for a mediation. And I'll get to what we're actually mediating because I, I don't.
Mediation is actually in the executive session. It's, it's a permitted use.
What are we mediating though?
We're mediating our ideas about housing, but we're also mediating any disagreements we might have about each other's approaches.
I, I mean, I don't.
Issue of housing.
I don't understand why we would need mediation for our different beliefs on how we should get to more housing. That's what I, but I, I mean, so first we should probably establish, you know, the two sides. What sides are you referring to? Because for mediation to happen, you would have to have two sides. Usually when you get a mediator, the two sides. Look for the mediator and determine who's going to be the mediator for the two sides. And the process that you're suggesting is, I assume you've already got a mediator?
Yes.
And lined up. So. One, I think you need to identify the other side. And then is it? If your side. Was the one that picked the mediator, it, generally speaking, it, it comes, you know, like I said, most mediations, the both sides choose. But I, I don't even know what you mean by size.
Of the mediator?
Well, it's, I'm, the process, it's, I mean, when you're mediating, the, the issue that I'm having is it's mediating size and I, I don't know. What. Sides there are. Can you specify what the sides are? Because I mean, I don't. I don't understand. Not. I, I don't, I guess I don't understand.
We tend to disagree. Certain groups in the council tend to disagree and sometimes they disagree in ways that seem very destructive. And I would like us to have an opportunity to have some of those discussions with mediation.
But I mean, it's part of politics. I, I hate to say that. I'm channeling Teddy when he makes comments about politics. I mean, it's, that's part of the process is you have differences and. People win, people lose. It's part of what it is.
I think it's about not having the city as a whole lose.
I think he was talking and I'd like to hear him finish.
And, and I just, I'm, I'm just struggling with that. I mean, it is, it is politics and. You know, I, I think that each one of us comes to the, the table with what we feel is best for the people that we represent. And if the mediation is to try to. Like stifle one side or the other, and, and that's, I mean, so what? What is the expectation of, what is the outcome of, of having a mediator in executive session, which I would not support? I just, what's the outcome? I guess that's one question. What is the outcome?
I think the outcome would be twofold. One is some agreement about the housing direction. The second outcome would be some ways, I want us to disagree. It's healthy. It's useful. But many of the ways we disagree become pretty destructive and I, and the people are pounding the table and there are people who are, I'm going to go home. That to me does not seem useful. And at this point in the city's life, we have to be able to pull together.
I mean, I, I think that. I mean, I'm. Not entirely sure where we're going on that, but I mean, again, it's. I mean, we're not. We're not doing the things. I'm not, I'm not suggesting that you and I should go and do an MMA fight, which is happening on the national level. You know, I, and I, I guess. I'm just trying to like the outcome, because it, it sounds like we're going to disagree.
Yes.
Sam, it's going to happen. So having a mediator, I'm probably not going to change my opinion about something because I'm ideologically different than you are.
Yes.
And I am absolutely, I mean, Teddy and I were absolutely ideologically different, right? And, you know, I, I'm not sure how a mediator is going to fix that or change that because.
It's not to change people's thoughts. It's to change the way people's work. And to do. Why don't we try Jo Ellen?
Yeah, Jo Ellen Mulvaney.
Thank you. Thank you for taking up this very important issue. You know, we only have to look back a couple of years into our city's history. With developing the Diversity and Equity Committee at that time, that's what it was called. And its relationship between itself. And also among itself and also between us and the city council. There have been many instances of. I would say very disrespectful behavior. And I'm not saying on any in particular person's part, I'm just saying that it is pretty obvious that sometimes, as Sam pointed out. When there are disagreements, there's not really a comfortable or a way, not comfortable, but a way to process those disagreements. So this is an opportunity for us to. Not only. Work on what process we can use to get to a place of not agreement necessarily, but just a place where we can work. Work on a problem or an issue, but it will also, because it's specific to a topic, help with the very difficult. Problems that we have now around housing. So it's using that topic as an opportunity to explore the methods and the process of disagreement. It's not about changing people's minds. It's not about who wins and who loses. That's the whole point. We have to get away from this, I'm a winner, you're a loser attitude about things. Otherwise we can't move forward together, as Sam so rightly pointed out. We were lucky that we got some good advice from very professional and very good. Consultants in the field of equity search work. And this is about justice. This is about, this is about making it fair for everyone and making everyone feel like they're able to say something. Because sometimes, quite frankly, with the way people behave in public. In private. People that are afraid to speak up because they're afraid they'll be targeted in some way. So it's very important for us as leaders in the community to demonstrate. For positive ways of interacting with each other, especially when we disagree. And I'm happy to answer any other questions.
I see.
Just would offer a comment again, Andrea Young. In my other non-emergency management life, I'm a facilitator and I would offer up to you that maybe it's not mediation that you need. That you need a facilitated process, someone to help you have. Better conversations, I'm using air quotes, people can see that, better conversations, not necessarily, like mediation is a very specific term. It's a legal term, you know, all of those things. So maybe you just need to look into some facilitation. That helps people have healthy disagreement and healthy conversations.
Thank you. I think you put your finger on it because. A mediation, you're correct, is not exactly the right word, although that is what we use when we wrote our grant. And that is what we used when we talked about having a facilitator to facilitate our conversations. This is when we were discussing. Having a mediator within our committee only. So you're absolutely right. This is not technically, this is not a classic mediation. It's more like what you said, what you described, an opportunity for us to figure out a better process. And a better way to behave with each other when we disagree.
Counselors.
Thank you. I guess what I'm trying to figure out is what we disagree on. Council has advanced infill housing. I'm all in favor of it. The council, I'm not aware, the council isn't behind Prospect Heights, which is a, which is new development out of the floodplain. Council all agreed to put forth the RFP on the Seminary Street Lot. Again, more infill development. So what I'm trying to figure out, my only complaint, here's my complaint, two. $350 a square foot to build a house. I'm ripped about that. And the fact that we haven't moved fast enough. I like to go faster. Those, but any of the ideas, Mayor, your idea about the seminary lot, first time you said it, I was like, yep, all over it. Let's do it. I like it.
I wanted all the points.
But, but I guess where, and then you say things like people got up and left. I don't recall that ever happening in a council meeting.
Oh gosh, it's happened many times.
Gosh, I recall that.
I left.
That's going to be.
Oh, bang the table. That's my, that's my thing. That's my thing.
When people do that, like I'm going to take my stuff and go home.
What are we disagreeing on? I guess that's what I'm trying to. We're embracing all kinds of it, whether it's infill, whether it's new development. We certainly, we, we don't have enough of a concept to have a disagreement on what happens in the North End. Because, you know, we're not there yet. We haven't listened to all of our residents. We don't have a conceptual plan. So I guess what I'm trying to figure out. Where is the big disagreement?
I see things breaking down when people get so angry that they can't keep continuing talking to each other. And then I think we lose out. And if we're losing out, the city loses out.
When? Just.
So what action are you looking for from other council tonight? Just to. Just to. Motion. Support for the mediation process or?
Counselor.
So are you referring to like conversations outside of city council?
No. I'm referring to conversations in city council. Those conversations outside city council, like fine, but it's the stuff that happens in city council. That makes me feel like, A, we're not putting our best foot forward and, and B, we don't have a good way to get beyond our disagreements when we do disagree.
Can I just say that we recently, in our committee, we recently did a, a recap of the last. More than 12 months. And in our discussions about, about what. What were the barriers for us and what were our, what was our progress? One of our committee members, and not the only one, the others have already left the committee actually, but this particular committee member talked about how. This person felt discriminated against within the committee. So I know it's within our committee that we still have work to do on that. And I see it in city council too, not just the way that you relate to each other sometimes, but also the way that you relate to some people. but also the way that you relate to some people who come before you. There has been, in my estimation, because now I've gone to anger management, so I know how to identify this really well, but it has taught me a lot. I'm joking, but it's really true. It's taught me a lot about how to move into different, different ways of thinking about things, communicating about them, and being with people that you share a goal of a better community, but you do not share the way to get there.
Guess I, that's the, the thing, I mean, we're going to disagree. And, and I just-
I want us to disagree.
Can you-
I want us to disagree successfully.
Because I'll be honest with you, let me just tell you, you want mediation for a group? That's the school board. Okay? This, yeah, and I said, I'm sure Sonia would agree with me. I don't know if she's still on, but yeah, I'm sure she would agree with me on that. But-
I would agree with you. I totally agree. And in fact, if we can create, excuse me, Michael, but this is a great opportunity here. If we can, if we can create among ourselves on the city council process or a method that is successful, we can, we can pass it off to other, other organizations and other, other institutions such as the school board. That would be perfect. And perhaps they could follow the same process.
Yeah. And I was just referring to the fact that, that's neither here nor there. I'm just, can you give like a specific example except for like getting up and leaving? And, I mean, I, I'm sure that, it just, I, I guess I'm, I don't understand. I mean, a facilitator to go through what we're, what our ideas are for the, the North End, you know, what's within our scope as a, as a city council and for us to go through that process? You know, I could certainly see that. But a mediator, I just, especially when we're, we're talking about, again, I get back to, you know, what two sides are there that you have to mediate? And what are we mediating? And what's the outcome? And I guess that's what I'm just struggling with. And, and I don't know why I'm struggling with that, but I am. Just trying to see-
So what I'm hearing Sam talk about is the outcome, is it more productive council that's working, that's building consensus faster and more productively to serve the cities of area? I don't, I don't, I haven't heard her characterize two sides, but that the problem is, is that there are, there are ways to disagree agreeably and there are ways to disagree disagreeably and moving more into a mode of disagreeing agreeably. And maybe finding, finding new tactics for, to build middle ground faster. Because I agree with Councilor Lozong, I, I think we haven't moved fast enough on housing for the past two years. And I think we've jockeyed around and pushed and pulled. And in the, in the process of all that, we haven't gotten much done on the housing front because staff doesn't have a clear political consensus of which plays they want to run, are going to run. And political consensus is what helps staff know which direction to go. But when they, when they, when they, when it's noisy, it's hard to know what, what, what play to run. And so I think we've made really great progress, as Councilor Lozong pointed out, adopting that recent housing. I think that's an example of us working in a much more productive way by saying, we're going to continue to work with the governor on Northern Flood Resilience and Flood Resilience generally, and flood recovery, run the Prospect Heights project, look at parking, well, at least one parking lot downtown, hopefully more. And, and, and look at the infill development opportunities and think about other housing investments. But it took two years of talking for us to do that. And meanwhile, the grand list is going down, the property, you know, our population's going down, households are struggling. And so this is an opportunity for us to come together and think about how do we work better together? How do we, how do we run a place faster?
Right. And I, I get that. I get what you're trying to say. But like, for example, infill, I mean, the city only owns so much property and, you know, I don't, I don't know, people that have more than, you know, a half an acre, are we going to start approaching them and asking them to sell it so that we can build property or buildings? Is that what, because it, and that's, I mean, that's just my thought on the infill is like, what does the city own that we, we've already put out there, we want to sell, but the properties that we have aren't really developable, right? We've been down that route. And I guess that kind of stuff, moving forward, which is, I have a great idea for moving forward for housing, which we'll go into executive session at the end of this meeting and I'll make that comment. But that's, you know, it's a, and I'm sure nobody will agree with it. But that's okay. And I just, I, I just don't see, unless, what would you see changing?
Great, a great question. What would I see changing? I would see that maybe we'd have better ways to disagree and better ways to proceed and agree on general directions. And better ways to disagree could be really powerful. And it's two sessions, you know, it's two sessions and it might make us better. It might not. The facilitation might not work. But I've seen some meetings that I was embarrassed to be a part of because of people's behavior. It wasn't like they were disagreeing about an issue, they were like digs and they're like slamming their, you know, it just seems so embarrassing.
I don't think you want to go there with me. You know, I don't, because there's some things that can't be mediated until acts and victims are recognized and until people responsible, instead of being hidden and protected, until they're held accountable.
This seems like a good reason to do facilitation.
We're talking about two different things, Sam.
I know.
And, yeah. We're talking about two very, very different things.
That's the whole point. We're talking about different things and that's what makes it difficult. So in order to be able to move through it without ranker and without animosity and without antagonizing and bullying, we could use some skills, all of us, me included. I'm, I'm not making myself exempt from this. We're, we're all, we all can be victims of our own emotions in terms of behaving badly. So anyone can do that and we all have, I'm sure. So it's really, it's really a positive thing. It's a positive opportunity. It's not about criticizing each other. It's not about saying someone is right or wrong. It's about finding new ways to be doing what we need to do.
Gary Hatch again. I think you've already changed the word you use to describe the process. And I think that's, that's the misconception. You started out saying mediation. You think of mediation, it's like mediation between the city and the unions. What's the result? The mediator decides the result. So if you're going to have a mediator, everybody has to agree on the mediator, not one person deciding on it. What you're really talking about is facilitation. You may get to mediation somewhere down the line, but you're nowhere near that point now. So you need to do a different process. It can be an executive session, can be anywhere, but it's not mediation. Because mediation, someone else, the mediator decides what the path going forward is. And I don't think that's what you were describing.
Generally, the mediator doesn't decide the path forward in, in this kind of setting, but they do make it come to consensus. So, yeah, it may be more facilitation, less mediation, but my, actually, my, my wife was a mediator and what she worked for was consensus and not for-
That's what you work for, but you don't always get consensus, do you? And in that case, because you don't always get consensus in, in negotiating with a union. You get a, you get a solution, but it's not consensus. Just all the, all the interested parties have agreed to accept the mediator's recommendation.
So in that vein, it's, it's 9:15. I think everybody's had a chance to talk and is there a motion?
I move retry facilitation.
There's a motion. Is there a second?
I'm not going to second it, not because I'm dismissing the idea, but because we, like, there's no, there's, there's no supporting document as to who this person is, what the process is going to look like. So because I'm not comfortable voting for that, not knowing what we're getting ourselves into.
Would it be better to have the person come and speak to the group?
At least, yeah.
As our next step?
Okay, so we'll lay it on the table for a future meeting.
Yep, the sixth, we can put on the sixth.
All right. So that takes us to upcoming business. We have a meeting on the sixth, right? That's the next one?
That's the next one, yeah.
Okay, all right. And what's, what are we looking at?
Besides Adam's report, I'm not sure, we're going to look at, we're going to bring to the council right now, a change to the grants management policy, really to address our FEMA issues. So it's a, I think, relatively minor change. Adam will be reporting, we'll do the facilitation and nothing else at this point, but I'm sure things will crop up.
The TIF annual report.
Oh, thank you.
Typically, we do that under consent agenda, but if you'd like to have it on a, in the open meeting, we can do that, whatever your preference is.
Yeah, I think it's, you know, important enough that, yeah, it'd be good, good to know where we stand. It's in the home stretch, right?
Hopefully, we're only at the midpoint. No, I'm serious.
We'll see if there's still property taxes being assessed on housing. And then, and then any other items for council?
Not, not this one, but things always crop up.
Okay, great. All right, so that takes us to roundtable. I'll start with Councilor Booton.
Went to the holiday party last night, even though I call it a Christmas party, Santa was there. Shout out to Joelle.
Yeah.
Okay. And I don't know his last name, but Nicholas is going to give you the last name.
Joelle Martel.
Joelle Martel, thank you. And Officer Hul, Sergeant Hul. And Clint, who, they had their anniversaries and Clint was 35, 35 years. Did he pay for the drinks?
Not Clint.
Yeah, not his, but other people paid for his drinks.
It was a great party, lots of fun having native tongue there. And, yeah, it's, I will say, when you said Sergeant Hul, I think he was an officer when I did the ride along, which, as a side note, as a city councillor on this body, it's highly recommend doing a ride along. When I did my ride along 10 years ago in the, with the police department, so every time I think of him, I think of machetes because somebody came out with a machete and Officer, Sergeant Hul said, stay in the vehicle. I'm like, I'm not going out. It was rather interesting, but it was, it was a great night. And I just want to say thank you for scheduling them for the evening. As a person that works, I haven't been able to attend and desperately trying to learn all the folks' names and I'll forget them next year. But, thank you. Yeah. And please, next time, get your order correct when, when you, you know, tell me who's who. Just saying. Otherwise, I'll start texting you, start texting you at 12 o'clock at night. I'll pass.
Councilor Wozzak?
Yeah, I'm incredibly frustrated, angry and annoyed at this meeting, not at anyone in particular. I just think that so many things happened throughout the course of this meeting that demonstrate how absolutely ridiculously ineffective so many, and nonsensical and not designed to work for average people, so many of our federal systems, not federal, government systems from the municipality all the way to the federal government are not designed to actually help people. You know, we, we heard stories earlier of the eight years it took FEMA to settle some of the 2015 damage in the city. That doesn't help people. The fact that we can't help somebody with their home because it might impact the grand list, which is a completely valid thing to think about when you're the city manager and you're in charge of the finances of the city, but that doesn't help Andrea, that doesn't help Nick, that doesn't help the people who are, who are suffering and living in this hell day to day. And so many, and same thing with the state government. There are just so many examples of government being completely stupid that I'm just incredibly frustrated by everything that happened tonight and I wish they were still here so I could apologize to them, but they're not. So, sorry, Sam, sorry to everyone who's listening.
I don't agree with you on much, but I do agree with you on that.
Well, yes, I had my way, you know, and I'll pass.
Councilor Lozong?
I'm good.
Councilor Stockwell?
I've been talking with more people in Ward Three who went, who are stuck. Essentially, they're stuck. And they're the people we want in Berry. They're young professionals trying to make it in their homes, they're young professionals. They're the people we want in our communities to grow, to grow our schools. And it's a kind of a no-win situation at this point unless, as Teddy said in an earlier meeting, we can get buckets of money. So, and when I hear people talk about the things they've gone through with FEMA, I, it's so disheartening and it's so heartbreaking really in the end. I'll pass.
I'll pass too. That takes us to, oh, Councilor Deering, I'm sorry.
Thank you. You know, we've, we've done some good work, but we have a lot of more work to do. We have a lot of great work that needs to be done and our community is really relying on us. And I implore us all, including myself, to do better, to act better, to think better. And really, we all need to step up our game. And with that, I will pass.
That takes us to, we have no executive discussion needed?
I would like real estate and litigation. Sorry.
Pending litigation or active litigation?
Possible.
Possible litigation.
Possible litigation? Not eligible. Sorry.
No, I think he's right. I think possible litigation is.
Just because you think somebody might sue you, sorry, Michael, but you can't go into, you know, you can't go into executive session because your neighbor says, I should sue the city. That's not a lawsuit. That's not even a potential lawsuit, that's just-
Well, real estate is.
Well, it's not. You know me, and I'm not picking on you, I just don't, I believe in transparency and not misusing executive session.
There's a motion-